...start, I think, to be given the electronic signal. Good evening. It's May 18th, 7:00 PM. Planning Commission meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Samut.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Viasadi.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
Mary Lou Johnson calls. She will not be here tonight and Kevin, the Chair, Kevin Chase is on his way.
Very good. I'll be pleased to yield the Chair on his arrival. I'd like to ask Commissioner Marshall to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible, with a vision just as strong.
Excuse me. The first item on the agenda is communications. Staff, are there any?
Two items. The first is that people at home, if they're watching, they can find the whole agenda packet in the Community Development Planning Commission section. The staff report will be there along with all the exhibits. There's also the color exhibits available. If you go to sanbruno.ca.gov and then slash developments.html, you also find it through our main community development website. You can see their whole submittal package of the treetops item, including the colored elevations. Second item is that Clara Fabry, our Public Services Director, is here today and following the treetops item. She's here for reason A to answer if there are any specific public works questions for the treetops items. She's here. And she's also here for a Gray Separation presentation that will follow the treetops item.
Thank you. And for those in the public who do look at the packet online, most of those color illustrations are within the packet. You don't have to look elsewhere. Item number two, public comment on items not on the agenda. If anyone in the public wants to comment on an item that's not on the agenda, you can go to the podium and give your name and street. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, announcement of conflict of interest. Do any of the members of the commission have a conflict of interest tonight on anything? Very good. We'll move right along then to item 4A, 4300 Susan Drive. It's an environmental determination of mitigated negative declaration. Request for an amendment to the development plan to allow two alternative design options. Request for a 12-month extension of plan development permit 5-2, which currently allows for the demolition of the existing 308-unit apartment complex and the development of 510 new residential units. And a request for the approval of plan development permit 10-1 and an architectural review permit to allow for the renovation of the existing 308 apartment units per Chapter 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code as an alternative project design option under the development plan. Aimco San Bruno Apartment Partners Limited Partnership is the owner and applicant. The subjects tonight then are PDP 5-2, PDP 10-1, and AR 10-6. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. As you just introduced, there are several items for your review this evening relating to the treetops Pacific Bay Vista's project. As indicated in your packet, the Planning Commission is the recommending body and that would be for the City Council to take action on the items that are before you. As the commission will recall, in 2006, the applicant obtained approval for a 510-unit new development and that was for 510 new housing units as well as other landscaping improvements. In 2008, the city approved a revised project as requested by the applicant. It contained the same number of housing units, but it was a different design concept as well as a different parking configuration. Due to the recent economic climate, the applicant is requesting the city approve an extension to that 510-unit project that you previously approved as well as approve an alternative project and that project involves the renovation of the existing 308 housing units off the site. I'll just walk through each of those items for you and then be happy to answer your questions. Relating to the time extension request, the previously approved plan development permit included a conditional of approval that required the applicant to commence construction no later than 24 months from the City Council approval. The plan development permit is therefore valid through December 24th of 2010. The applicant is requesting a one-year extension of this original project and that would require the applicant to start construction by June 24th of 2011. This action is included within your resolution 2010-6. The applicant is also requesting that the city approve an alternative design option that would allow the renovation of the 308 apartment units. This site is currently zoned planned development and the plan development ordinance requires the Planning Commission and City Council to approve a development plan and to approve a plan development permit that is then consistent with that development plan. What the applicant is asking you to do is approve two planned development permits consistent with the master development plan. So to allow this alternative design option, in addition to the original project, the city would need to amend ordinance 1719, which would modify the development plan for the Pacific Bay Vista's project. And this action is included in your resolution 2010-5. Finally, the applicant is requesting the city approve the alternative design option for the renovation of the existing 308-unit development. The renovation does maintain the existing number of housing units. It does include a complete renovation of the interior and exterior of the buildings. The applicant proposes a new exterior siding material. Erin, could you just move to one of the elevations? We also have the boards and I'll let the project architect go into more detail about the architectural elements. I just wanted to highlight some of the points for you. So the applicant is proposing a new fiber cement board and it's a combination of a horizontal siding as well as a lapped siding. And they're going for a Cape Cod design concept for this property. The proposal also does include some brick veneer as well as white trim, new balcony elements as well. The renovation also includes significant changes to the existing recreation center and that does also include enclosing the existing pool. And the project includes a new two-story clubhouse that would be located at the corner of Sharp Park Road and Skyline Boulevard. And the design concept for that building is two-story with a balcony and it's the same, similar materials and colors as the rest of the property. The applicant also proposes significant landscape improvements to the site and that would be landscaping surrounding the property as well as replacing the landscaping through the center to create a more pedestrian-friendly landscape environment with some seating areas as well as small barbecue areas and low-level landscaping that's mostly drought tolerant and more appropriate for the site than what's there now. The applicant also proposes to enclose the existing carports to create garages as well as construct new carports on the site to create more covered parking spaces. The parking, amount of parking will remain as is today with the additional parking associated with the new clubhouse that's located on the corner. So there's no reduction in parking spaces. There is a net increase. The applicant is also proposing a new trash compactor be located along the south side of the property. And as noted in your staff report, the management staff at Evergreen Ridge Apartments has expressed some concern and based on that, the applicant did come up with an alternative design to move it farther, to the south, that would place it farther away from the Evergreen Apartments. Staff is supportive of this alternate design location for the trash compactor. The existing roadway will remain in its current configuration and as you recall, the roadway was not formally accepted by the city. So it is a private roadway, but there has been public through access through the site, obviously, for many, many years. As a condition of approval, the applicant will resurface Susan and Highland Drive and the roadway will remain as a privately owned and privately maintained roadway, but with a public access easement over it. The treetop circle will also remain private. Does not need to have that public access. Staff recommends the commission conduct the public hearing and adopt resolution 2010-5 recommending the council amend the development plan. Adopt resolution 2010-6 recommending the City Council approve the 12-month extension of plan development permit for the development of 510-unit design alternative. Adopt resolution 2010-7 recommending the City Council approve the alternative plan development permit and architectural review permit for the renovation design alternative allowing for the renovation of the existing 308 apartment units. There are several minor changes with the documents. I know you have those ahead of you and if you have any questions, we can answer those. Also, we've been working very closely with the applicant to try to resolve any outstanding issues and hoping to come to agreement. But as you'll hear, there are some outstanding issues that the applicant has with some of the conditions of approval. You may want to defer some of those details to the City Council as it does involve payment of fees, dedication of the roadway. Just wanted to give you a heads up. And one item we do need to add is a condition relating to having a provision for bicycle parking onsite. We apologize for that oversight, but we'll need to add that as a condition as well.
Could you say that last sentence again? I missed.
I'm adding a condition of approval requiring onsite bicycle parking.
Oh, right. That came from the Architectural Review Committee.
From the Architecture Review Committee. We overlooked that and didn't add it in here. Erin, was there anything you wanted to add?
The only two things I'd like to add is related to the garbage situation on the south side of the property line. As Lisa indicated, Evergreen Ridge still does have a problem with where the alternative garbage trash compactor would be located. I'm also, we also included a condition that they more spell out how the recycling section would work. They previously had, their first proposed location had the trash and recycling in one area. How they're showing it now, the two would be separated. We'd like to see how that would work. We, in a typical situation, we would have them all in one location. And the second had to do with the garage. Right now, we have a condition that there could be no storage within those garages. We would feel comfortable that incidental storage be allowed as long as it does not impede on the ability for a car to park within that garage space area. So if they put some eye level cabinets there for storage or if someone was parking a bike in their garage, that would be fine as long as a car could still fit within the garage area.
Okay. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have and the applicant also has his team here that would like to make a presentation as well.
Did the staff have any opinion on any of the other Architectural Review Committee suggestions?
I think we incorporated the one suggestion, I think there was concern about the design of the building on the corner.
Right.
And I can have the applicant address that.
Okay.
And then I think we want a further expansion on the green building elements and the applicant has submitted some additional information on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to return the Chair to the Chairman. And you're just at the point where the applicant is about to make his presentation.
Actually, through the Chair, I have a question for staff. Exhibit B, number 80.
Exhibit B, the resolution?
The conditions of approval.
Okay. Condition 80 you're referring to?
Yeah, 80. Planting of 1 36-inch. Is that an oversight? I mean, this is a larger project. See those on smaller residential projects.
Correct. The way it should read is how the second line reads is that the applicant shall be required to plant 1 36-inch box-sized tree for every 50 linear feet of parcel street frontage in accordance of San Bruno Municipal Code 8.24060. So yeah, just one for every 50 linear feet.
Of the frontage.
Correct.
Yeah, she just gave it. And next is the applicant's chance.
So the Planning Commission knows that is one of the conditions that the applicant would like to work with us on going forward. This is within the code that you have to plant one tree. However, there is not room. We have worked with other developers to provide onsite mitigation or mitigation around the neighborhood that fulfills the same intent.
Through the Chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'm mentioning this not because I noticed a number of typographical errors in the document tonight, but I think they can be understood. But my concern is if there, if I found a number of typos that appeared fairly simple, maybe it's the wrong version. Does staff have an opinion?
I believe you have the right version, so they're probably real typos.
Okay. I'll report them offline, shall we say.
Okay. Lisa, are you done?
Yes.
Thank you. Would the applicant please step to the podium and state your name and description of the project and all that good stuff, please?
Go back to, Jim, go back to. There we go. Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Patty Schwader. I'm Senior Vice President of Apartment Investment and Management Company, or Aimco. We're the owners of Treetops Pacific Bay Vista's and whatever name we might decide in the future.
Excuse me. Can I just get you to speak into the microphone just a little closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better?
That's much better.
It was taller than I was. I apologize for that. Anyway, we have our team here tonight to present this project to you. We really thank you for all your hard work and interest over the years and certainly all the hard work and interest of the staff at the city who've just been terrific in going through these various proposals. We are hoping that the third time is a charm and hoping that this is a project that will be built quickly. I know that's in your interest and certainly it's in our interest as well. Tonight I have with me our team, Sean Finnegan in back of me, our Regional Development Planner, Jim Van Sickle. They're all in back of me. I never like to, oh, Jim's up here. Our Vice President of Development, Scott MacArthur. Our Regional Property Management Manager, Cecily Barclay. Our Attorney, George Corey, our other attorney. And then we have architects and landscape folks who Sean is going to introduce later. So what are we trying to do? We're trying to provide a major gateway to the city of San Bruno. We've heard from all of you that this project up on the hill is not the most beautiful thing. So that is part of our plan to really upgrade the facility. As Lisa said, we're adding an alternative that's consistent with previous zoning approvals. We're looking to create a well-designed residential neighborhood using new architectural features, high-quality landscaping, which we'll describe to you in a moment. We want to take advantage of the excellent location and views. We really do like this property. Whenever I say views, people say, "When have you seen the views?" Every time I'm there, they're spectacular. There is a need to revitalize the neighborhood. The property's obviously been empty for a while and as I said earlier, we want to get going and fill it up and bring new life and vitality back to the neighborhood. We want to continue the partnership with the community and neighbors. We had a very good community meeting a couple of weeks ago. People came and I think were excited about the project and we bring it to you in the spirit of cooperation with the community. And we want to gain approval, most importantly, for an alternative proposal that can be actually financed, constructed, and leased in today's market. As everybody knows, the market has been very challenging and so we're looking again to have a project then get built and get built relatively quickly and be filled up. So what does this do? Just briefly, it's a major renovation of all 308 apartments. It's the total complete renovation of all 14 buildings and associated parking lots and maintenance buildings. It's got a new clubhouse, which we'll describe in a moment, and a leasing center to be built on the vacant parcel at Sharp Park Road and Skyline. Susan Drive will be remade open as a public roadway. This has been a concern in prior hearings, so I wanted to highlight that. The hillside will be landscaped using sustainable and more drought tolerant plant material and the units will be, I believe Sean has told me, 500% more energy efficient and the appliances will be energy efficient as well. So we've got a lot of work to do. The recycling program we'll describe in a moment. We think this is a good thing for the site. We have many green elements in and I also want to report, as Mr. Nack is looking at me tonight, we plan to use union labor and reached an agreement with the Build and Trades Council as well. So we're excited to include that partnership in the project. And now I'll turn it over to Sean Finnegan to describe in more detail.
Planning Commission Chair, members of the commission, my name is Sean Finnegan. And at this point, what I'd like to do is to introduce our architect, John Garrison with Newman Garrison Partners and also Paul Reed with Reed and Associates, our landscape architect. They're going to run through the packet that you have in front of you in a little bit more detail, but we'll try to keep it brief. Then I'd like to have our attorney mention a couple of things that was brought up here by staff about a few of the conditions of approval that we're still discussing with staff and then we'll open up for questions that you might have. So with that, John Garrison?
Thank you, Sean. This view of the, is the same as the rendering that's on the poster here and it is the corner of Sharp Park and where the new building is going to be currently. That is a vacant parcel. And so it's a two-story building, it's kind of a story and a half from this side. There's a lot of glass area and the reason for making the building like this is to take advantage of the terrific views and the location that this project has always had, which is one of the reasons why we changed the name from Treetops to Pacific Bay Vista's. Go to the next slide. So here on the site, again, the top right corner where it says clubhouse, that's the new two-story building. That's going to be the new leasing office. And then the other buildings are all existing buildings. The rec center there, just below the clubhouse, is also going to be now an all-new building. It's in the same place as the current leasing office, but will have really all-new everything, new covered pool as well. This was just some of the imagery we took to, as inspiration for this project. We've looked at these buildings and we think that they've got some pretty good bones, some good structure to them. All the buildings will remain exactly where they are, the size that they are, the slopes of the roofs, everything will remain the same. But we're going to use that as a base for adding more detail, adding more interest in sort of a seaside architecture, coastal architecture with the colors that you see here, muted grays, whites and such. The roofing color we'll use is the same as is there now. So in terms of what the project will be, it's the same size, same massing as there now, but with more interest and more detail to bring it up so it doesn't look just like a 1980s project with a new coat of paint. It's going to have a lot more detail and interest. There's just some slides of how it looks now. This then, this one and the next one are pictures of the new office clubhouse building at the corners we talked about. There you can see it's sort of a story and a half where we focus some areas to overlook the view towards the bay and then keep the other elements around the building low. So it gives it a more of a residential appearance. There's the clubhouse views. The side that faces towards the view is a double-height wall of glass, which is one reason why we have chosen to make the building a little more commercial on that side. It is a commercial office building, but it has a residential look from the front, which is the south elevation and there's brick on there and some posts. But we really wanted to focus on the view and the potential for people who live here to come and have, you know, a place to congregate and enjoy the view of the San Francisco Bay. This then is the revised building that's currently the office building. Essentially, it's an all-new building. It will have exercise equipment, restrooms, and a pool building to the left there. It's just the plan there. And the pool building also opens with sliding doors to an enclosed patio for sunny days. And it also is reflective of the new kind of architecture. We're going with this more seaside architecture with what appears to be cedar shakes, but actually it's all fiber cement material, a fire-resistant, much more durable material than the wood that's there now. And on the buildings themselves, again, we're keeping the architecture in terms of the structure of it the same. We're improving it. The material here is split into a combination of lapped siding, which is similar to what's there now, and some shake siding along with some brick elements at the bottom. The roofing will be the same type, but all new. All new windows, railings, and new detailed trims and columns. We'll probably go through these. These are just the plans of the buildings as they exist. Three-story. Here are the unit plans. Again, as we're talking, all-new interiors, everything that will be reduced down to just the spare studs and the floors. So all cabinets, all drywall, all wiring, all plumbing, everything will be installed new, which is one reason why we can confidently say that the project will be much more economic, much more energy efficient than it is currently. And then these slides show the color schemes that we propose. A little washed out with the lights on here, but again, a lot of warm grays, bright whites, some vinyl materials that are white, some brick at the bottom. And then the roofing, essentially the same color that's there now on the buildings with a slightly different color for the office buildings. Well, here's the scheme for the buildings. There are two different color schemes we've got going. All the buildings essentially are the same. They're all identical buildings out there now. But we are going with two different schemes of color, so we'll break it up some. And I'd like to introduce Paul Reed, the landscape architect.
Good evening. I'm Paul Reed with Reed Associates Landscape Architecture, Sunnyvale. Looking at the site plan here to the, there's the three basic parts I see to the landscaping. One is the slope area to the far left and the second, the large central courtyard, which we've tried to incorporate a lot of usable area in there. And third is the area around the units and also the individual entry courtyards to the different building clusters. This is a part of the, this is the main part of the central courtyard and it shows a central gas fire pit sitting area there and also some barbecue areas with picnic tables. There's also three covered barbecue areas there so that it can be used in, for shade and also in inclement weather also. We're widening the path through the central courtyard and also incorporating all-new landscaping. There are a few trees on the site that we can save, but many of the trees are either half-dead or really not doing very well. And so we're proposing adding a minimum of three new trees for every tree that we're removing. And the trees that are being removed are only the ones that are not healthy or the ones that are too close to the foundation of the buildings. There are some challenges to the landscape design on this project and the way that the plants have been chosen are that I wanted to look at salt tolerance, drought tolerance, both in native and non-native drought tolerant plants and looking at wind tolerant plants also because some of the trees that are up there now aren't doing well just because they can't tolerate the constant wind. And so I believe we have a really good plant selection. This is an example of the, this is the landscaping around the clubhouse leasing office. So the part at the top of the plan there is the part that faces Skyline and we're creating some different textures and colors using drought tolerant landscaping and native grasses and non-native grasses to give a real interesting look, but nothing that's high water. The only so-called turf area that we do have on the project is in the central courtyard and that's going to be one of the new artificial turfs. That's a pervious-type turf that, you know, rainwater can go through it. But we're not using any real turf on the project. This is an example of the upgrade. On the right here, this is an example of one of the upgrades to the entry courtyard areas. We're trying to create a landscape area that's a little bit more usable that's there now. The previous original landscapes were just all planted with big trees in there that blocked out the light. They really stopped the air circulation in that sunken courtyard. And what we want to do is add a couple of smaller trees that are colorful and add some low-growing shrubs and ground covers and add some hardscape area in the way of pervious pavers so that that area can be more usable. These are some images of the type of materials and colors that we're thinking of adding onto the project. You know, from the covered barbecue area, which is in the upper-left there. And we're adding sitting areas and barbecue pedestals and some different kinds of paving. We're using concrete pavers as the highlight paving in some of the, some of the circulation areas within the central courtyard. There's some photographs and a list of plants that we've proposed to use. And again, they're a mixture of native and non-native plants. There are some shade plants, some sun plants. But all the plants that we've selected are salt tolerant and the ones that are exposed to the wind would be wind tolerant. Thank you.
Jim, if we can go back to the landscape site plan. At this time, if I could have Cecily come up and our attorney and just explain a couple of things about the conditions of approval and then we can open it up for questions that you might have. that you might have.
Good evening. My name is Cecily Barclay and I'm a land use attorney, and I've actually been working on this project since 2005. So I've been here with Pamela and Erin and others for quite some time. And I just, we just wanted the commission to know that we are working with staff on the conditions. You've got several resolutions in front of you and many attachments, and we know pulling all this together was quite an important feat, and we appreciate that as in our effort to get construction going this fall. And so I just wanted to let you know that we're working on, as Erin mentioned, trying to get some credit for all these trees that are being built and that's allowed under the ordinance and some language about the garage and other things that we think are really very simple and we just need to spend some time doing that, but we just wanted to let you know that. And the only other issue is there's a series of conditions in the new PDP for the rehab, their numbers 56 through 61, and they really all address the nature of the roads and utilities and are they private or public and the maintenance work that needs to be done on them. And there is a substantial factual question as to whether or not these roads and utilities were in fact dedicated and accepted by the city and were not, and sort of what do we do with them going forward? And right now, the staff report says they're private and they should remain private. We think they're public and they should remain public. The important thing is that we're all talking about this and we think that we're going to reach resolution and be able to make a recommendation to council. I mean, we're hoping we can all agree, but because of the nature of some of the discussions, we just haven't been able to finalize everything right now. So we just want to make the planning commission aware of that, but we also are very comfortable moving forward to council and believe that we'll be able to get these fiscal and ownership issues resolved, and I'm sure your staff could answer any other questions that you have, or we'd be happy to as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to staff and planning commission. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Can the commission have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Marshall.
Basically about the garbage setup there, do you know where the Evergreen garbage is?
Where their system is? I don't. I believe they have dumpsters scattered around the property if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so the way yours is going to be, you're going to have, I'm guessing you're going to have a dumpster in each building and then the maintenance worker is going to bring it all to this location or?
That's correct. The way the compactor works is you still have the dumpster locations, they're a little smaller, I believe, two-yard containers. They fill those up and on a daily basis, we will either cart them or wheel them over to the compactor area, dump them in there, and then wheel them back. And the same thing will happen with the recycle bins that'll also be in those same dumpster areas. They'll be taken over to a recycle, swapped out for an empty recycle bin and placed back in these scattered around the community dumpster areas.
So the only time the compactor is used is when your maintenance people bring stuff there?
That's correct.
And I'm going to guess during the day, you're not going to?
It's what we've agreed upon is between the hours of 9:00 AM and noon is when we would do that operation. Then the, we've, we're going to size the compactor with Recology to be picked up only once a week. So instead of having a trash truck come dump, you know, the dumpsters there for a couple of hours or however long it takes them to dump all the dumpsters, they're going to come once a week, pick up the compactor, it takes about 45 minutes to swap it out, and then they bring it back.
And were there any other sites looked at for the compactor? Like over by the new clubhouse, I'm thinking, or?
We met with Recology onsite and staff, walked it, also walked it with Evergreen. We spent a lot of time on this issue and we think that, we came up, we submitted a plan that had two alternatives along with the first one, and it's most logical and due to the circulation, due to the roads, public-private, the way that they would back in and have to service the compactor and have to take our golf carts and wheel these dumpsters around if you would be doing them on public roads or not, these are the most logical locations to place that.
And just on the proposed area there, is that the way your propylene actually comes in twice like that?
That's correct. It does jut in like that.
Than usual. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Could I ask one other question?
You certainly may. Commissioner.
Do you realize that this may be, this compactor issue may come up at the council? There may be some more residents from the complex next door there, so this isn't the end of that, I'm sure. Do you realize that?
We do understand that, and like I said, we have studied it a lot. We've met with Recology, we're very comfortable with the operation of it, the distance between our buildings and their buildings and the wall that's going to be in between, and it's, we feel very comfortable with the locations that we have selected.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Smith.
I believe Lisa in her report mentioned that you, your company wasn't particularly happy with the alternative site for the compactor. Did I misunderstand that?
Aimco is, the applicant is okay with it. Evergreen Ridge, the neighbor is still not, is not satisfied with the proposed alternative location.
Right. I just, okay, that's fine. We'll discuss that later, I'm sure. Thanks.
Through the chair. Commissioner Pierce.
One last observation on that, and then I have one other question. My experience is trash bins and compacters, is that when you bring the traffic to it, it makes a lot of noise as it rocks back and forth on the wheels. They're usually not smooth-rolling wheels. They're almost designed to make noise, so that's going to happen every day of the week. Then there's going to be quite a large truck to come get the compactor. That's probably going to be the lesser annoying factor, but if you have residents in the neighboring complex that are right next to that, it's going to be very annoying to them. That's just my observation. The other question I have in the architectural review committee meeting, I commented on the leasing office at the corner, said I thought it would make it look more of a pedestrian-friendly scale if the second floor were moved back a few feet from the first, and I wondered if you would consider that observation.
Okay. John, maybe you can respond to that?
Yes, we did talk about that, and those are fine right there. Thank you. The building itself, of course, it is, as I said, it is an office building, that's its function, and the, we intentionally made this side of the building a two-story room with glass for gatherings, parties and such, and that happens to be the side that's facing towards the view, which is across the street. And so the majority of the building is more residential in appearance with a wraparound porch out front, the south elevation, that's the entry as you come in from the parking lot. As you look, as you come around even towards the west elevation facing the other buildings as you're coming along Sharp Park, there is a more residential appearance, it's a hip roof, but again, the whole reason for making the building push towards the street there was both to have an interior room that's a double-height space and also there are two exterior rooms on that side as well for gatherings, for people to have private parties or just group gatherings, families over, something like that. And so there's actually a ground floor space and an upper floor viewing deck. And so yes, we did push the architecture on that one side towards the, that side of the building, and the intent was to make use of and to be able to have viewing out onto that fantastic view. From that second floor there, the view of San Francisco Bay is tremendous, and the few apartments that the original design faced with windows towards the bay, they're very impressive views, and we really wanted to push that, which is why we kind of went that way with that building.
Well, if I understand correctly, the, those six windows are all going to be in the same plane and it's going to be a two-story open space inside, right?
That is correct.
So you can't stand in front of the windows on the second floor at all?
There is a, it is a two-story room and there is a balcony behind that.
Oh, there is.
If you could go back maybe one, please look for the plan. Yeah, there it is. There is a, let me just come over here. What I gave is that the two-story volume of this moon here will, the entire place we decide, the glass, all the way up to the port, and there is this connecting balcony between the two, sorry, there is a connecting balcony between the two, there is a front lounge and a rear space, again, that connects to this. Viewing terrace, and so from all of this area, you could see through that glass to the view. So that really was the whole push of the design to get the building to lay out just like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep, through the chair.
Commissioner Smith.
Question for Erin. We just got through with the residential design views, and one of the items that I remember was the, I guess would be the non-use of vinyl windows in a residential setting. Now, does that not apply to this particular, I'm not against the vinyl, I just want to know how that would read.
I think the intent in the residential design guidelines was to use, for instance, windows that not, might not be wood, but that appear to be wood, and when you're replacing a window, that is a wood window, so that when you have these older mid-20th century, 1950s homes that are built, when you have a series of them looking the same, that you don't replace it with something that looks entirely different. So I don't think it necessarily applies for this building because this is a brand-new building in its own planned development setting, but design is always something that we're looking at overall.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it up to a public comment. If anybody from the public here would like to speak on this particular project, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, if you would please.
Good evening, Chair Chase and other honorable members of the planning commission. My name is William Nack and I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of the Building and Construction Trades Council, San Mateo County. As Patty stated in our discussions with the developer, they have reaffirmed their commitment to the Building Trades Council that our highly skilled, decently-paid construction workers receiving quality health care and pension benefits will be employed to build the Pacific Bay Vista project formerly known as the Treetops, which includes renovation of the existing 308 apartment units located at 4300 Susan Drive. We look forward to working with the general contractor to make this project of the highest quality so that the city of San Bruno can look upon it with great pride, and I thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Nack. Anybody else from the public who should need to comment on this?
I'm Joanna Dunn. I just have a few comments.
Could you please?
Hi. I just have a few comments about this. Sounds like the open access way, the Susan Drive, is still a issue, and I'd like to see when this new alternative permits are given, if we could have in writing that this row will be open, whether it's private or not. I would like to see if it's open from today forward because there had been a oversight probably the last time, 25 years ago. And I wasn't sure what it means when the developer was saying that the Treetop Circle is a private, is that outside of the Susan Drive open space, then I have no issue with that. As far as the inspection on the storage, to allow, making sure there's always a car in that, inside the parking garage, I'm not sure how city will enforce that. If started the remodeling, the old plan will be, would not be adopted, right? The old permit would not be adopted, and that decision will be made in October when they either do the remodeling or November when they submit a plan for the actual development of the new buildings. That's how I understood it. And paving of the Sharp Park area, I think that should be included in this development because that row has been really bad lately. There are potholes everywhere, and with the construction trucks coming through, it's going to be really ruined. And the recess of the clubhouse to the Susan Drive Street, I'd like to understand how far it is from it and if there's enough walkways for pedestrians or actually for the safety of the clubhouse. Lastly, I want to find out what is this parking ratio once this remodeling plan is completed? Right now, I only see five parking spaces in front of the clubhouse. That's the only additional club spaces available. What is the final parking ratio which is a concern for all the neighborhoods? And that's why we pushed for 2.1 parking ratio last time with the previous permit, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, staff. My name is Anna Lisa Leonido. I am the property manager of Evergreen Ridge Apartments, and on behalf of our community, you know, over the years, we've been very supportive of this construction, whether it's the complete renovation or a tear-down. As a neighbor, community right next door, we've been very, very supportive of it. However, this new plan with regards to the trash compactor, we do have an issue with it. It is a big concern for us. As a community manager, it's a concern for my residents, not only for the, with the noise, but also with regards to the odor. Unfortunately, the wind blows towards our property. The alternate locations, we would like you to know that it is not acceptable. We'd like to request that it is not put in the Treetop Circle along that retaining wall because it will affect all of our residents on that side of the retaining wall. So we'd like staff and the commission to please readdress this issue with Aimco. Over the years that the property has been, Treetops has been closed down, it has affected us with regards to our occupancy. I mean, in this economic times, it's challenging as it is, as Patty had mentioned, but the fact that it has been abandoned, we've lost some prospects because they've seen an abandoned building, they've turned around and did not want to come into our property. So the issue of having that compactor would be, it definitely is a big problem for my residents now, and we would like to retain, you know, as many residences we have because of this, you know, economy. So we'd like first off to please readdress the compactor issue. Aimco or Treetops has about 13 acres. It's very spacious and I, you know, we believe there are other locations that this trash compactor should be put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, before she sits down, can I ask you, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Where is your garbage located?
We actually have seven, seven garbage dumpsters located in, within our communities.
Your map is right up there, can you kind of, you don't have to, you could stand there and just kind of, is it top, top left, bottom?
Well, we have, in one of them, we have them by building D, which is the very first one located. If you look at, that's A, and then the first, the next one's B, C, and D.
Maybe if you walk over, that might be easier. I'm sorry.
So we have one right over here at the corner of the D, and we have one in between the B and C, and then we have one also in between these two buildings right here, and we have them, one at the other corner of this building, this is H and I, and then we have them in the upper level of the property, which is in the O and P building. We have two other buildings on the upper of Susan Drive.
Okay. And so you, do you have anything on the border of the Treetop there?
No, sir.
And how often, how often does the garbage pick up at your place?
Three times a week. It's Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask you a question before you sit down? I have a nephew who lives there, and I know, because we've I have a nephew who lives there, and, and I know, because we've, we've moved furniture in and out of it, there, if there's not one there now, there was a dumpster almost at the same location as the alternative site for their compactor. I, I know, because we, we dumped stuff in that dumpster, and I know, it was there-
Can you Google?
For a while, because we went in and out of there.
That, the dumpster, that may be the one building between the C and the D, or the B and the C, in the first area, that section, between the first buildings, in the front, there is a small, that was the first one.
Yeah, there was definitely one back by that wall.
Yeah.
In the back, def- definitely, because I know we, we put stuff in there.
I'm not sure how close it is to the retaining walls, sir, honestly.
Okay.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Would you please step up to the podium? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing and bring it back to the Commissioners for discussion, or, for pleasure.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall?
Anyone, Aaron or someone there? On those, not the proposed trash, the one, but the second one that comes out, is that property line, it looks like it's right on the, the building of the Evergreen. That's what I was asking, if that was the actual property line, so.
Correct, the, the property line jogs in towards Evergreen, and that was their initial location, that they proposed, the trash area, and our recommendation was to take it further away from the Evergreen Ridge buildings. So the alternative site location shown on the site plan that Lisa's pointing to right now, takes it from, the initial area was about fifteen feet away from the nearest building, this is about forty to forty-four feet away from the nearest building. So that was one of our initial recommendations.
But not, not the proposed one, just to the, the left or the west of, of that proposed one, there's a second little inlet there?
Correct.
I mean, if, if their buildings are to scale in the right spot, I mean, it looks like it's right on the property line, if not over the property line.
Yeah, I, I, I believe it's all within their own property lines, but it's pretty, pretty close.
Okay. So their, their buildings are pretty, pretty much to scale on, on this map, that's fairly, I mean, to what you guys know?
Yeah, we didn't verify Evergreen Ridge to see if that was to scale, since-
That's pretty close.
It's probably pretty close, yeah.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
This really isn't my subject, I researched something else, but I can't help but notice that this main trash location is virtually immediately adjacent to Evergreen, and quite a ways away from treetops. Why did staff consider asking treetops to put the trash compactor as, in a new enclosure attached to one of their existing buildings?
We asked them to explore everywhere on their site. What we did was we met with San Bruno Garbage, or Recology, as they're called now. From an operational standpoint, the south property line works the best, because it's a straight shot down, and there's no turning needed. This, I also spoke to someone at Recology today about this type of trash compactor, and what effect it could have on the neighbors. They do have similar trash compactors in other multifamily buildings within San Bruno, and they're actually a lot closer to the living unit than this would be to both Evergreen Ridge, as well as treetops. The smell is minimal, because it's an enclosed case versus an, an open dumpster, that would, you know, that could obviously smell more, and the, the pickups are less frequent, once a week. So, our initial take was, you write, you know, when they first proposed it as close as they did, we said, you know, you have a lot more opportunities along that. If, if what you're going for is from an operational standpoint, the best thing to do for San Bruno Garbage, at least not put it at the closest point to Evergreen Ridge. So at that point, they moved it from fifteen feet away to about forty-four feet away. They did not provide any alternatives within the site, other than things along the, other than sites along the south property line, though. But after talking to San, to Recology about their operational needs, as well as the specific type of trash compactor, we're comfortable with the alternative site as proposed here. And there's also, keep in mind, there's also a tall retaining wall there, so it's not a case where it could be seen from ground level as you, as you're walking in Evergreen Ridge.
Thank you.
Can I continue that thought? Because I don't have any of my own, I'll just continue his. And I, I might ask this of, of the owner. It looks to me as though that compactor takes up about roughly three parking spaces. And I could be wrong, I'm just looking at this, at the plan here. And, and I'm wondering why that, if that were the case, why that couldn't be moved to the three spaces adjacent to the garage areas along Susan Drive? And if, if a facade was built to continue that garage, so from Skyline or Susan, it would look like it was part of the garage. You take it away from the adjacent apartments, and it's a shorter run for Recology to get to it.
Would you mind pointing out where your-
Yeah, where it, it says existing carports convert to garage, right there on Susan. There, shows two garage units, and then just, I guess would be north of that, there look like there are three spaces, parking spaces there?
Okay, one, one issue that is important to understand about this whole front facade along Skyline and Susan, there's a sixty-foot easement, public utility easement, and there's also North Coast County Water District line runs right here. So they have an easement through that whole area. We looked at that whole entire length, about where we could put and build a structure there. The garages have to do with them either being grandfathered, et cetera, but we, we, we can't put anything, there's also a gas line running through there as well. So there's a spaghetti of easements running that whole entire length.
So that's just for building this, but isn't the compactor on wheels?
The, the compactor is on wheels, but part of what we worked with staff on is how to enclose it, how to put a roof structure over it, so you don't have a compactor just sticking out there and being right on a public street and-
Okay. Through the chair.
Commissioner Marshall?
And, and, another point is that we do connect to sewer in terms of drainage and stuff for it, too, so.
If, if that is an existing garage, could you just put it in that existing garage and, and convert where you want the proposed garbage, add three more garages there?
Again, what we tried to do is, we tried to work with Recology, and we spent a lot of time on this issue. Part of it is the operation of how their truck has to swing into it, how the doors open up to it, and just the geometry of getting in and out and making that easy. These are not small trucks, but they're also not huge trucks either.
Well, I think there's a lot more room in that main garage than there is where you, I mean, first, I mean, if you don't want to do it, just say you don't want to do it, but don't, I mean, the first time you said it was because of water main and, and this and that, and now I gave you a good alternative for the water main, and you're saying that the garbage company's problem, decisions. You couldn't put a, you're, you're saying if that was the only spot to do it, the garbage company couldn't pick up there?
You're, again, you're referring to-
That existing garage, if you took three of those spots, and put it in that existing garage, and then where the proposed garbage area is, turn that into a, a carport or garage, then you, you wouldn't be losing any garage space, you'd be moving the, the garbage away from the neighbors, which they would like, and I think you're putting it closer to the street where the garbage company could be easier.
That, that's also at our front door of our project. We prefer not having it right there at the front door. It is an easement area, we, we'd like to preserve also as much parking as possible. You've heard a lot of complaints about parking. We think the location that we have chosen is the ability to not remove any parking spaces. There's an existing car wash there, that, and also a median, that will be literally zero loss of parking spaces to be able to put it there.
And that, the lower, well, I'm just going to move around this parking lot till I find the place with that thing, but the, the lower, the lower right-hand corner of this shot, you're, you're probably, I'm looking, just if I scale this out, maybe about fifty-five, sixty feet away from the closest neighboring building? And it looks like, since it's in a corner, there's plenty of room there for a truck to come in and pick up the compactor.
If, if you're referring to this entire parking lot here, you could probably get a better feed from Evergreen, to whether they would want it there.
No, I'm talking about the three spots, just on the very top of that, if you start from the corner, one, two, three, right there.
Okay, we looked at that location, it's actually part of our discussion with staff, there's a gas line that runs right through there, and a sewer line as well.
So you can't put, you can't put a, any kind of structure on top of a gas line or a sewer line?
We would not be opposed to putting it right here. If there was no structure over it, if the city and utility companies were okay with us just putting a compactor there and no enclosure, we're not opposed to that.
But you're not okay next to the garages on top?
We would not, we would, we've chosen a location that we think is best for everyone. May not be best for Evergreen, they may be opposing that, but we think it's the best location. You're, we're trying to fit other locations, we, we could, we could, feel free to just continue discussing this, but we do, we prefer it not being at our front door, prefer it not being on, right on Susan Drive, where the public can see it. And we prefer staying out of utility lines, we prefer enclosing it as well, and that was something we worked with staff on.
Do, I'm sorry.
I want to hear what Aaron has to say.
Do we have pictures of, we don't have pictures of the enclosed-
Through the chair, I, I think the best, I, I think, I understand, I understand exactly what the Planning Commission's saying, I think, I think everyone wants Aimco to explore all options that could have the least impact on their, their neighbors. What, what I would find, I think a good direction to go is to at least explore the possibility of having that along, to see what easements are actually there, what can actually be built in those easements along the eastern property line, and what type of screening could be implemented, so it doesn't have a negative visual impact on the, on the treetop development, and for those to be shown and proposed to the city council, because my guess, my guess is, is the city council did have concerns last time with where the trash area was, and actually added a condition that it go back to architecture review in the long run. So if the Planning Commission is expressing those concerns, and expressing those concerns within a recommendation, I think it would be the best direction for Aimco to at least provide those alternatives, and what those alternatives would look like.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
So how about a recommendation of any place they want, just so it's at least fifty feet from Evergreen?
It could, I mean, if, if that's what the Planning Commission would like, but I, there probably are some area, areas fifty feet from the property line?
Right.
Or from the buildings?
No, from the property, property line, excepting those little indentations, which are sort of not really where the main property line is.
Yeah, I mean, that would-
All, all of these questions are focusing on, where could they put it that's not right next to Evergreen?
Correct.
Which I think is fair, I think their sales office would be a good place by this time.
Yeah, I, I think based on with the, with the Planning Commission direction, to at least explore an option along the, the east property line, towards where the garages are outside of the easement areas, or if it is in the easement area, we could talk to the easement holders to see if it's okay, if a pad goes down there along with whatever drainage needs to connect to the sewer system.
Is, is part of the reason for that, that it's flat getting out to that east side, whereas if you go toward the north side, it, it goes downhill a little bit? I, I'm, what I'm thinking is, why restrict the search to, to the east side? Why not just say, keep it at least fifty feet away from Evergreen?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I, I'm sure they're very imaginative, that, I mean, the design, they've done a lot of work on it, they're not short on thinking, you just need a criteria.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, through the chair, I think that's, Aaron, you bring up a good point, I mean, the only real complaint here is that the, the compactor is going to be too close to the neighbor. And, you know, I like the design, I, I think something should be done up there, I think it's great that they're going to go ahead and, and make this happen, but the only real concern is where that compactor is. Then I, I think it's, it's worth their while to do a little due diligence, and see if there are any alternative locations that are going to make everybody happy in the process.
Agreed, and, and what we could do is also facilitate the process with Recology, too, to make sure that those, those spaces also meet their operational needs.
Through the chair. I mean, maybe even just a condition that they bring back the, the drawings of what it's going to look like, and maybe it'll be fine where it's at. And the other thing I just noticed, I'm trying to look at this architectural thing, look at those sites, the Susan, Susan Drive parking does not jive with the, the plot plan. The plot plan has two garages, and the, the architectural plan has three carports. If you look at L one point zero, compare that to that one there?
If the, have the architect or the applicant speak to that.
Yes, I mean, it could be something minor, I don't know, but it just, maybe not.
The, the third garage was actually eliminated, due to the easements that are there.
Okay.
And North Coast County Water District line that actually runs at an angle across, we were going to do a ten-car garage there, so I do apologize that when we printed that set, it had that removed off of there.
So this light, this covered one is the, the correct one?
That's correct, there's only going, the two existing garages are going to stay, we're not going to build the ten-car garage there.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. On, I noticed on your drawings, on, next to building thirty-three hundred, there's a square marked maintenance on the south property line, adjacent to Evergreen.
That's correct, that's an existing maintenance building.
Okay. Any chance of putting a compactor in that area? That seems to be kind of far away from everything.
That wouldn't be fifty feet from their property boundary. That's, that's still the same distance to their buildings as the other location.
Is it?
No, anything that stands on line, that would be what they're looking for.
There's a, there's a drawing I'd like to pass out that shows the dimensions to the buildings as opposed to the property lines.
Great.
This is an existing maintenance building that we do need to preserve, so I'm not sure why we would want to remove a maintenance building that's necessary for the, for the project. There are units immediately right there, the front door of units, decks that are immediately right there as well. So I'm not, I'm not sure why that would be a preferable location to where we have it now, and it's, it's the same forty-six, maybe even closer than the location that we're proposing.
Can I just ask a general question about the buildings?
Certainly me.
So are you saying then that the buildings generally are all, these are grandfathered in, and if you tear anything down, or remove framing, you can't rebuild? Is that, do I get that correctly?
Are you referring to tearing down the maintenance building?
Well, just in general, because I, you, that's kind of twice, you, you mentioned that you wouldn't want to tear something down, like the, the garages out on Susan, you said were grandfathered in, so they, they could stay, but you couldn't put anything adjacent, any kind of structure adjacent to it. And you, that was kind of the impression I got when you talked about the maintenance building also. So I'm just asking, I'm not trying to be a jerk or anything, just asking, if, if buildings get torn down on that particular site or project, will, could you rebuild?
We could rebuild anything. Part of the issue here is getting a project that's financially feasible. If we start tearing buildings down, rebuilding the maintenance building somewhere else, if we could find another location, a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollar building easily, that's an issue for us financially.
Okay, through the chair.
Can you give me an idea, the compactor where you have it located on the drawings now, it's smaller than that square that it's lined out to be. How far from that building on the, was it Evergreen, the, your neighbor's building? How far does, because the compactor's smaller than that square, so-
Did you see that drawing that I passed around?
Yeah, it says something like twenty-three feet to the property line.
That, that was the original location, the new location is forty-six feet, I believe.
So you're forty-six feet away from their building?
Correct, and we're forty-six away, and forty-three feet, I believe, is the dimension to our building.
Okay. So it's about fifty-fifty between your building and theirs?
The compactor itself is, I believe, eight feet wide by about fifteen feet long, so if you did an enclosure around that, you'd be about twelve feet wide by, say, twenty feet long.
Okay, and your hours of operation again are going to be like nine in the morning And your hours of operation again are going to be like nine in the morning until noon? So it's not something that's going to be running all day long?
That's, that's correct, we can mandate that, and if, I mean, a three-hour operation, it's not going to take three hours to bring all those cans over.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the commissioners?
Just for clarification, you're okay with this city's proposed one, or you're not the alternative one? You're okay with the, with the alternative one here?
To be clear, alternative one location being right here?
Right.
That's correct.
You're okay with that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other trash compactor questions of the commissioner? Please. Oh. Oh yeah, thank you very much. If you want, if you have a question. Yeah, can you go up to the microphone and ask him though? Please, sorry.
And it's still about the trash compactor? We're just, you know, I, I've worked at Evergreen, or at Treetops, I manage that property, so I'm pretty familiar with the property. With regards to the trash compactor, there is, there are spaces right behind building thirty-eight hundred or thirty-six hundred, that, that's just within their property line, that perhaps the trash compactor could be placed. It's big enough space for the recology to actually be able to back in, that type of thing. So, you know, that area right there, there's a two carports right there, and there's a whole line of parking space beyond, you know, like, right behind, by building thirty-six hundred and thirty-eight hundred, right along that line. So I'd like to find out if that's something that perhaps they have already considered and, you know, maybe reconsider putting that trash compactor in that area? Is there any easement, any utility issues perhaps that we don't know about?
We'll certainly ask, thank you. Aaron, do you have any insight into that, or?
No, I mean, the only thing I was going to say is, it'd probably be better not to go back and forth on individual locations at the plan, unless the planning commission wants to. But this is something, I think we hear the planning commission loud and clear, and I think this is something that we could take back and work with Aimco and develop a plan prior to the city council meeting as part of your recommendation.
I think that would be a smart thing to do myself. Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I have a proposed additional condition that I'm, I've worked up because of the way we got to this project, the fact that the original structure deteriorated within something like fifteen or eighteen years to the point that it was no longer serviceable, required major reconstruction to make it serviceable. And the condition, I, I wrote it out and then I forgot it, but I can pretty much remember it, and I, I would make it subject to staff's practical rewording to meet the intent. But generally, it says that the development plan and subsequent development permits will be subject to certification by the design architect and engineer that their contract documents, their plans and specifications, will produce a project that protects the primary structural cavities of the project, that is, the inside of the building, inside the envelope, to last a minimum of twenty-five years without requiring major reconstruction, with the exception of an event such as a six-point-five earthquake or greater or similar act of God. Specific examples of, of what would be important to meet these criteria would be corrosion-resistant features such as aluminum gutters versus galvanized steel, stainless steel fasteners or other similar low-corrosion fasteners where exposed to weather, wind resistance of the structure and the windows, and resistance to wind-driven moisture, so that moisture is not likely to be able to be driven into the structure. The reason I'm proposing this condition is simply because, as the landscape architect in his pre, in his presentation today pointed out, he's putting plants there that are resistant to wind, resistant to salt. He didn't say corrosion, because as I'm familiar with plants, they don't corrode, but he described a situation pretty succinctly there, that this is a challenging environment. And the way that I've worded this condition is to make the design professionals responsible for checking their design so that it's not likely to produce the same result. In fact, that it, it's more than likely that it will produce a result that survives very well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if you have them, but I, I would like to propose that condition.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra?
I would personally protest to the verbiage of that condition, asking anything above and beyond the basic standard of care provided by design professionals. I think that's excessive. Though, I do understand that the location does require attention to detail, but I think standard of care as required by the practice act is good enough.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
As a, as a design professional, I can understand where you're coming from. I've been responsible for designs as well as for construction. The concern I have is that without specifically addressing those conditions and with the exigencies and pressures of the economy and time, that without specific focus on quality to resist weather and salt conditions, that it's very likely that the same problems can reoccur. I'd be completely open to any other condition. As a matter of fact, as far as I'm concerned, I've done the thing that I mainly want to do, is bring to the commission's attention that so far, there's nothing in the approvals here that require addressing the environmental conditions there as being any different than any place else in San Bruno. And what I'm drawing your attention to is the fact that the conditions there are different than most other environments in San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on that, or discussions on that particular possible new condition? Aaron?
Through the chair, the, I had spoke to Aimco about this. We, obviously, this is, our building official has met with Aimco and discussed this with them. Aimco has actually hired a waterproofing expert for building materials. They're also using a cement-based siding for this product. What I, what I would feel comfortable with, and perhaps the, the planning commission could feel comfortable with, is that a report be prepared by this waterproofing expert that details the type of materials that were selected, as well as what the standard lifetime of these material, materials are, and why they were specifically selected for this site, given the past history of the site, and given the microclimate that exists on the site.
Okay. You know, I'll just, through experience currently right now where I work, we're experiencing a lot of problems with the original construction of the hotel on Half Moon Bay, where we had to replace sliding glass, the whole entire sliding glass door system and, you know, siding and everything. And Commissioner Peterson brings a good point. I mean, it is a microclimate, you get the wind, you get the, you get the rain, you're going to get intrusion with the water, and I think it'd be very important to make sure that we do have protection there as far as, you know, what are the, what are the windows rated at, you know, as far as, you know, wind, water resistance? Anything, any of the sliding glass doors, or maybe on balconies, and those type of things. You don't want to have to go and replace anything like that ten years down the road. So I, I think, you know, the point is well, well made there, Commissioner Peterson. And personally, I, I like the condition, you know, but that's just for me.
Let me, through the chair, let me ask staff, would that address also the, whether they use galvanized sheet metal and whether they use ferrous metal fasteners on the outside?
It could, I, I would say, any material that is exposed to the weather climate should be included, would be included in the report, is whether, as well as any material in the interior that was damaged by the current construction at Treetops.
Through the chair. I, I hate to say this at this point, but the report will not cover other factors that, that cause issues such as, you know, two dissimilar materials being in contact with each other or a pinhole of causing cavity, I mean, I understand where Commissioner Peterson is going with, with this intent, but I don't think the waterproofing expert at this point in, in the project will be able to come up with a, you know, the devil is in the details. It's, it's how those details are going to be, going to be put together than the CDs, and to, at this point, also let the contractor off the hook. It, it, it's not-
Through the chair, my thought is, why don't you hear from the applicant? I mean, your issue obviously is the longevity of the product there, because there were issues with that this last time. And I know that Aimco has given that a lot of thought, so perhaps we should hear from them as to what their suggestion is in terms of addressing your very legitimate concern.
That's right, I'd invite Aimco to make the tunnel. I think that's a great idea.
If it pleases the chair. One thing to keep in mind, I'll have our architect explain the waterproofing system and, and what we're going about here. This is a fifty million dollar investment to Aimco. We're not interested in doing something that's only going to last ten years. So I know I can stand here and say that, but we are, this is a major investment for our company, and we want things to last, that's why we have hired all these experts. And, so with that, may I have the architect explain a little bit more in detail?
Please.
Sure. The suggestion of having the waterproofing consultant write a report is a very good one. They have, in fact, already been out on site and walked the buildings and reported back that in many cases, a lot of the wood products that are there have failed. But in other areas, the wood products there are doing pretty well. In fact, the wood, it looks as if it's brand-new. So it depends on the orientation of the building, the wind direction, et cetera, and whether any water ever got in there. A lot of that has to do with how the buildings were originally constructed. And as Commissioner Mishra said also, it depends on, you know, whether there's openings and such. They have found that there was some pretty sloppy construction back in nineteen eighty-three, eighty-four when this was built. There are openings, there are places where the flashing does not lap properly. And so it's, it's the materials and it is the details, and it is entirely also the construction itself. The best details, the best specifications won't help if somebody leaves a gap when they build it. And so one of the requirements that's going to be of the waterproofing consultant, and he's a consultant from up in this area, so he knows about the weather that's up in here, that he's going to be on-site along with myself, the design architect. We're going to be reviewing the construction as it goes along here. Each building is going to be inspected and there'll be a report written. So it, it has more to do with everything involved. Yes, there has to be good drawings, and yes, we will design to better than just, you know, industry standards. We're also proposing that the construction of the exterior walls be done as a rain screen. In the northwest, especially in Seattle and Portland, the, the, the materials are very similar. Lap siding, whether it's fiber cement, wood, or other products, are done where there is an actual air gap between the outside materials and the inside, or the outer surface of the exterior wall so that air can rise up between the outer surface, the wet surfaces, and the inner surfaces. That allows also for interior moisture to escape through the wall. Part of the problems that you see out there is that there's been just too tight a construction in some areas, then with gaps that lets water in and it has nowhere to get out. So a rain screen allows water to come out, air to go up, dries things out. It's going to be far superior to what was there. Will it absolutely last twenty-five years? I couldn't say that, and there's no way that we could sign a document that says that. We will build it better than it was. We will provide details that are better than were done back when. The construction will be observed far more rigidly, and we will have reports that say that, yes, we have seen it, yes, we can certify that these buildings were built according to the documents. That's also going to be a part of our, our review with the, with the owners and with HUD.
Thank you. Any questions of your particular-
Yes, one, one question. How will regular inspection be, how, how often will regular inspection be performed to look for these, compliance to these details?
We're required to be up here every, twice a month. Part of that is for the requirements of the funding, but part of that is also just because there is a great emphasis on construction administration, of observation, report writing. We're not making exhaustive inspections of every square inch of every building, but we are looking for how things are constructed. It's instruction for the contractor to understand the documents properly, and that's a big part of the waterproofing consultant's job, and my own, to make certain that the installers are educated about how things are supposed to be done, about the proper laps, the proper sealants, and really doing a completely different kind of application of the materials. In the end, it will look like it's siding again, but there is something behind that going on that is very different than what's up there now.
Sounds very good, thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra?
As, as part of your recommendation, Commissioner Peterson, for, you know, orderly drawings and specs, I would, I would prefer to add that during construction administration, that the submittals and the approval of the submittals plus field reports and photos be furnished to the city, if, if that's possible, via website or any other way, so that city officials can keep a documentation of what's going on.
And that's something I'd like to give a little further thought to, because the downside of that too is to place the responsibility on the city to warranty work or to make representations about the work that we don't necessarily want to be in the position of, of making. What I'd like to think out with the staff a little bit is to understand more about, you know, the role of the city and the building official in, you know, reviewing work. And that's a particular function that he has, but it's limited in scope, and I just want to be careful not to exceed that scope and create a liability that we don't want.
That's fair.
Through the chair. I think we're getting into building issues and we're, we've got to be careful starting precedence. If we require this building to do this, and if the resident on Susan Drive wants to do an addition, wouldn't we be required to the same restrictions on them? I mean, we have building codes, and the building codes are for a reason, and, you know, if they want to build a building that's only going to last ten years and have to rebuild it, they're going to have to answer the lender and their investors more than they're going to have to answer to the city, so, I mean. We have building officials, we have building inspectors, we have, you know, let them decide how it's built, not, not my decision.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
If we had the same building inspector intensity of presence on this project as we did on the average home remodel, that would probably be fine. But I, I seriously doubt that's going to happen. And what, what my, what I was thinking was, when I proposed this condition, which looks like it's not going anywhere, but what I was thinking of was trying to arrange it so the internal development team would have people who are more dedicated to a final product that will last a long time. And I think a waterproofing inspector will certainly contribute to that. At the same time, well, and they do have an example of what happens when there's a problem, but I still have that concern. And I would hope there were some way to improve the inspection frequency. Inspecting a project of this size twice a month is not a lot of inspection when you're talking about quality control inspection. And the, the term quality, it, this is going to take a minute, but I, I'll do it. And the the term quality, it isn't going to take a minute, but I I'll do it. Quality control inspection means that an individual looks at the plans and specifications and submittals and then checks in the field to see if it's being done the way it was designed. Typically, when that's done, it removes a lot of the problems, but it takes a fair amount of time, and I don't know, let me ask the community director, will our inspectors, do we have city staff who can do that on a regular basis for the entire project?
On a project of this size, for instance, with the SNK project that's going on in the crossing, city inspectors are pretty much on the job site almost every day throughout the construction process, and they do exactly what what you said, the quality control. They take a look at the plans that were approved, the structural plans that were approved, the plan to show finished materials, the plan to show architectural elements, and they make sure that it's being built exactly how those plans were approved. So, yes, I mean, that's that's what the building inspectors do, and they are outside, they are on there on almost a daily basis on a job of this size.
Thank you very much.
And I would add that our building inspectors are, our two building inspectors that we have now are some of the most certified building inspectors that you'll find in San Mateo County, and they also have the luxury of experience inspecting multifamily developments because we've we've inspected the crossing recently.
Good point.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Off that issue, the only other question, somebody from spoke up, they're asked about the Susan Drive, and it is going to stay open, I mean, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the Susan Drive stays open, but the treetop circle is closed to the public, and the only additional parking is the five spots at the at the clubhouse.
Correct, the additional parking is the five spots at the clubhouse. As currently proposed, it is, it stays as it is, the public can go through that area. It's a private road, but there would be a public access easement over it that would allow the public to still go over that area.
So there'll be no changes?
Yeah, I mean, that I mean, that's as that's as currently proposed per per city council policy. As the developer has mentioned, that that item is still up for, going to be up for discussion when it goes to the city council of how this road is is actually used and whether or not it's a public or private road.
And what is the parking ratio?
The parking ratio is one point, same as it as it's always been, which is 1.66 per per unit. One thing to note is that we do have the condition that they have to use parking as parking, and this has been enforced within other developments. Parking demand usually dictates that the fact that they are, that they do use it for parking, but we have had this condition implemented successfully in other projects.
Well, I think the only other question was on the inspections of the of the parking in the garage as compared to carports. How is that going to be enforced?
Yeah, they would they would enforce it themselves, but like any other code enforcement complaint, if we had a, if we got a call that someone's using a garage as storage, we would go and inspect and make sure that garage wasn't being used for storage.
Do we have a code enforcement department that does that?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
There's also another question in regards, I think, to the paving of Sharp Park Road or part of it, if you will, all those potholes, I know I drive them daily.
Yeah, we don't have that as a condition, as it would be difficult to have the nexus of having this project repair Sharp Park Road just because of the vehicle count on Sharp Park Road.
Who is that? Caltrans? I'm just curious, because if you exit out of out of, was that Susan Drive?
Sharp Park Road is a public road within within San Bruno. Skyline Boulevard is owned by Caltrans.
Okay. Okay, any other questions here by commissioners?
Yeah, through the chair.
I have a question for the applicant. I just would like to get a feel from you. We've got two resolutions in front of us. One is to extend the 510 unit, and the other is to rebuild what's existing. I, just for my own interest, I'd like to get a feel for what it is you guys really intend to do at this point.
Through the chair, Commissioner. The the proposal and the drawings and the amount of time and effort that we've been putting into is going towards a 308-unit rehabilitation project, and that's why we're bringing this one to the forefront right now in front of the planning commission and staff and working so hard towards this. That's the applications that we're doing through HUD. The, so, that's the direction we're going. There is a reason why the 510-unit project is not being built, it's not financially feasible right now. That's not to say it can be financially feasible in a year from now. However, we're proceeding with the 308-unit project, that's the direction we're going.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions? I do have one for staff here. The the attorney for the applicant was referring to, if I'm not mistaken, conditions of approval 56 through 61, and that there was still some discussion between you and them, if you will. Is that correct? And if that is, then how does that play into any possible vote on a resolution? If that's not, if that's not satisfied yet, you know, how do we feel comfortable addressing that?
What we would recommend, what we are recommending is the conditions as they are in the staff report to the planning commission tonight. What we should always realize is a project of this size, a project of this scope, there can be conditions of approval that are changed by the city council, especially as they relate to policy level decisions. So, these these conditions could, in theory, change, they may not, but these are the conditions that we are recommending to you tonight based on the project as it is right now.
Okay, thank you. All right.
That's a good idea.
Through the chair. Eric, would it be a good idea on the garbage issue that the structure be brought to ARC review or be brought back to us for? I'm asking if that would be a good condition.
It it could be. I mean, the other, the other option would be that they present full architectural drawings to to the city council, and if the city council is not comfortable with them, then they could they, what they did last time when they weren't comfortable with them was they created a condition that it come back to ARC. But there is one additional level of review.
If it goes to ARC and ARC review, bring it straight, push it straight to the city council with the rest of the packets, or does it have to come back to us after ARC review?
Yeah, I would probably not rec, I mean, what I would do is just later have that one item of the trash compactor area come back to architectural review rather than bringing the entire project back to architectural review.
No, I don't mean the whole package. I'm not, I'm saying if they just bring the trash compactors to ARC review, and if they approve it or can it be brought straight to the planning, along with the rest of the packets up to the city council can?
It could, I mean, or you could just separate the, you could separate the item entirely. Now, the city council is scheduled to hear this if if the planning commission chooses to forward it in three weeks from now, so it would be difficult to have an architectural review hearing between that time.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions here? Well, it is going to be a resolution vote, that is correct, right?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
These, Aaron, these would be consecutive resolutions. You can't do them all at once, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I move the commission adopt resolution 2010-5 recommending that the city council approve an amendment to the development plan to allow for two alternative design options. This development plan will be referred to as amended development plan.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in order.
Okay, roll call vote on the first resolution. Commissioner Samut.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Aye.
Chair Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, that's one of them.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Move the commission to adopt resolution 2010-6 approving a 12-month extension of the planned development permit 5-2, which currently allows for the development of 510 new residential units. This entitlement will be referred to as the 510-unit development, or 510-unit design alternative.
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Samut.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Aye.
Chair Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Aye.
And Commissioner Mishra.
Aye.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I move the commission adopt resolution 2010-7 approving planned development permit 10-1 and an architectural review permit allowing for the renovation of the existing 308 apartment units and associated improvement. This entitlement will be referred to as the renovation design alternative and collectively as the modified project.
Second.
And through the chair, would the planning commission like to add the condition regarding the trash compactor, that the developer explore alternative sites for the trash compactor and provide architectural drawings for sites at least 50 feet away from the property line?
Yeah, I believe since we beat that horse, I think we should definitely include.
From the property line or from the, from the adjacent property, 50 feet from the property line, none of these sites work.
I think the intent was to look at sites other than on the southern property line. Yeah, the planning commission could convert it, what I understood was that the planning commission liked to see sites that were not on the southern property line, perhaps on the east property line or somewhere else, but not to limit the the size, not to limit the.
I don't mind you putting that, but but you, the way you said was 50 feet from the property line, I mean, from sites other than the east property line.
Correct, okay. Other than the south property line.
Our south.
Yeah.
All right, I'll accept that modification.
I'll accept that as well.
Okay, we're all good with that then, I guess. A little clarification goes a long way. Aaron, more clarification?
So, the, just for clarification, the additional condition will read that the applicant shall shall explore other trash compactor site locations on property lines other than the south property line and provide those alternatives to the city council.
Sounds okay to me.
Good, good.
Okay. All right.
Call for the.
Got a motion in the second? Both accepted the, okay?
Call for the vote.
Commissioner Samut.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Aye.
Chair Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Aye.
And Commissioner Mishra.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you all.
All right, now, is there, there is no 10-day appeal period on this one, is there? As usual? No. All right, well, that's that on that particular agenda item, correct?
Can I give him a second to get out?
Correct, we have one more.
Hey, congratulations, a job well done, and hopefully it's going to be a wonderful project. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. So, are we ready to move on with our our next item? Which, presentation of San Bruno Grade Separation Project. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Rafael Bolan, I'm the project manager with JPP Caltrain for the San Bruno Grade Separation Project, and I thought I'd walk you through a little bit of the status very quickly and then focus on some of the design elements that we're incorporating in this project. So, a quick overview, the purpose of this project is to improve safety at three crossings at grade in the city of San Bruno, which is San Bruno, San Mateo, and Angus avenues, and in doing so, we'll eliminate some traffic bottlenecks that exist there now, I'm sure all of you who drive to the freeway have noticed that, and improve access to Bel Air schools at Line Field Park, reduce automobile congestion with the, you know, corresponding environmental benefits, and also support San Bruno in downtown revitalization efforts that are ongoing. And so, to this end, we intend to essentially raise the existing Caltrain tracks and partially lower those three crossings that I mentioned, Angus, San Mateo, San Bruno, and construct three additional pedestrian-only underpasses located at Sylvan Avenue, at the station itself, and at Euclid Avenue. And the vast majority of the project is being constructed within the Caltrain right-of-way. There are some minor property takes that we have negotiated with the property owners. I'm going to focus on the big one here, which is, or the two big ones, which are, number one, there is a minor property take at First Avenue at Melody Toyota, which we have already, we've just recently signed an order of possession with the owners. And the second one is Artichoke Joe's, which the parking, as you know, is owned by City and County in San Francisco, and we are in negotiation with all three parties to facilitate that purchase and then also to compensate Artichoke Joe's in kind with some additional So, very briefly, the project schedule, we, right, as we speak, actually are in the construction of a preliminary construction project for a box culvert reconstruction at Bel Air, basically at Pine Street and First Avenue. If you've driven by there recently, you've seen we've we've done some clearing, some grubbing, some excavation, and we're preparing to do the actual demolition of the culvert itself. The aim of this is to actually reconstruct the box culvert to, number one, increase capacity, and number two, to design it such that it can sustain train loads that will then apply to it as part of the main project. The main project itself, actually bids were open today, and we are looking for a July 1 board award, in which case, construction, we do what we call LNTP, which will allow them to go through submittals, et cetera, in August, with actual construction to begin in August 2010 and to last approximately two years. So, really quickly through the phasing, this is San Mateo, San Bruno, as it is now. The freeway would be up to the top of the screen, to the left, you would see 380, and that area up to the bottom left is, was formerly the lumberyard, right now it's a vacant lot owned by JPP. That's ultimately going to be the parking lot for the for the new transit center we're building. Then, to the top right, you would see Angus, and of course, ultimately, the existing station as it sits there now. So, one of the first things we need to do to facilitate our construction is to is to build what we call a shoe fly, which is a temporary rail bypass, if you will, immediately to the east of the existing Caltrain track. So, this would be a full-speed, at-grade, two-track shoe fly, all within JPP right-of-way, and what that will do is, obviously, we'll have to build in phases because of the the road crossings, as you'll see in the next two slides, but what that allows us to do, if you want to hit the next one, is essentially build a temporary bypass immediately to the east, run our trains on that shoe fly, and then that allows us to build a project, as you'll see, where the existing tracks are. And so, the construction itself will be essentially a retained earth structure, an MSC structure, and rather than using earth, because we will be constructing adjacent to and in some cases on top of the existing barge structure, we're going to use an ultra-lightweight cementitious product, which is a cellular concrete, and so the concept is load balancing, wherein we will essentially excavate down to a maximum of eight feet, we'll remove normal-weight dirt at about 110, 120 pounds, soaking wet, and then we'll go all the way up in the air, replacing it with this ultra-light material, which weighs no more than 30 pounds per cubic foot, so about half the weight of water. And so, the total combined weight of this entire structure, plus the MSC, plus the lightweight fill, will actually be the exact same as what's there now. So, that's kind of the concept. So, what you see there in this slide is you see, on the bottom left-hand corner, you see one of the pedestrian crossings, which is essentially a concrete tube, if you will, and then you see the MSC itself, and then you can see the abutments. Reason we took this shot is in particular, San Mateo and Angus will actually be relocated as part of this project. Angus will be connected, if you will, if if those of you familiar with Angus realize that it kind of makes a little bit of a jog, we'll connect the dots, if you will. San Mateo will move immediately to the south of the current alignment. San Bruno is a little bit trickier, because San Bruno will remain where it is, the only real change is the sidewalks are getting a little bit wider. So, what that means is, in the course of doing this kind of phasing and this construction of the various elements, we need to swap back and forth between new alignment, old alignment. Well, at San Bruno, new alignment is old alignment. So, what you see here is what I call a donut, but essentially, you'll be bypassing traffic around the center when you're working in existing San Bruno, and then, of course, And then, of course, when you're working on the bypass, you, you reverse the process.
Excuse me, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
You said San Mateo and Angus will move, or did you mean San Mateo and First? Angus is down more east. Angus is the second crossing.
Correct. It's, it's the third, it's the southernmost crossing. And Angus, right now Angus actually connects to First Avenue, then it makes a slight jog, then it connects on to Angus again. You have to make a little turn to, to get up to the school.
Angus, yeah.
Correct. So what we'll actually be doing is, is skewing Angus such that it's one continuous street.
So on a 45, like where 711 is now, it'll go straight over to the other Angus?
Exactly. It's not quite a 45, and it avoids the, the 711, but exactly. That's exactly right. San Mateo will remain in a similar alignment, but it'll just shift immediately to the south.
But you're talking San Mateo closer to San Bruno Avenue now?
No, no, no. San Mateo as it crosses our tracks. So the San Mateo, as you recall.
Well, Angus is, because that's two different locations. That's what was kind of messing me up.
Right, but both will separately be relocated.
Okay.
San Mateo is just getting shifted to the south. As you recall, in 2008, we actually realigned Angus. It used to go at an angle, and then we realigned it to make the, the current configuration. And we'll just be taking the exact same configuration and shifting it further south.
You realigned First and San, and San Mateo Avenue.
Both were realigned in 2008, correct.
Okay, I think, I think you said Angus one time there, and that's what messed me up. Okay.
Okay, I apologize. Go ahead. Okay, so here you can see the construction of the abutments and some more work on the MSC walls. Go ahead. Now you can see the actual construction of the bridge structure, which would be flown in from the Huntington Avenue side. And then here you can see the station itself. So the station will be an elevated station between essentially the lumberyard, which will now become the transit center, all the way over to San Mateo. One, one note on the staging of this project, and, and I won't get too much into the high-speed portion of this for obvious reasons, but this project, of course, is being constructed with high-speed rail in mind. However, this is only being constructed for the two Caltrain tracks this time. So what we've done is we've staged it in such a manner that it does not, on the one hand, preclude high speed if they, if they become involved. On the other hand, we don't want to do any demolition. We don't want to build anything that would have to be demolished if high speed occurs. So the main contract, as it went out to, to, actually, I'm sorry, was, was, bids were open today, was to construct what you see here, which is improved Posey Park, street realignments, all the grade separation, the six pedestrian crossings, and then the southbound platform of the station only. And then if you want to jump to the next slide, the next, what you see between the last two slides is construction of the northbound platform, and then all the tie-ins that would go with that, obviously, the ramps, the, the elevator, et cetera. So the reason we staged it like this, this last component makes up what we call option one in the contract. And what that is, it's done in such a way that at the completion of the main contract in 2012, depending on high-speed rail involvement, one of two things will occur. One is high speed is ready, willing, and able to follow directly in our footsteps, in which case we will not award the option, and high-speed rail will actually come in and construct an additional two tracks immediately to the east, which will, which will be situated exactly where our shoe fly was. So the staging is, still follows a logical sequence. Or if in 2012, for whatever reason, high speed just doesn't seem like it's coming anytime soon, or we're, we're sitting here saying, well, we're talking about high speed, then that's when we'll invoke the option and we'll construct that, that remainder. So I think we actually have a slide showing what the wider footprint would look like, and that's with two tracks only. This next slide, yeah, there you go. So this would be the final ultimate build-out, if you will, with, with high speed. So the, of course, we would have to work this out with high speed, but currently the plan is that the two outside tracks, so the westmost and the eastmost track would be Caltrain, and they would stop at San Bruno. And the two inner tracks would be high speed, and they would in fact not be stopping at San Bruno as high speed is now. If they changed their mind, then so be it. But at this time, their intent is to stop at Millbrae and to bypass San Bruno Station. So I have a couple of renderings. Unfortunately, the angles on these are a little weird, so you have to bear with me. But this is a shot of the expanded Posey Park. So one of the things that happens by some of these street alignments is it allows us to do a little bit of expansion to Posey Park. And what we've done is we've incorporated the eastern part of Posey Park. So the, the part that you can't see because it's off the page is, would looks rather similar to what you see now, which is more of a tree, vegetated sort of park. Whereas the area closer to the par, to the station, rather, will be, what, what you're seeing there in the front, again, unfortunately, the angle's a little strange, is, is a series of colored pavers. And what we've done is created a design using three different colors, and, and I'll show you those later. And then they sort of come to a focal point where you can see that tree, where they have some planting and sort of a, an entrance to the, both an entrance to the station and then also an area for congregation, sort of. There's some benches around there and, and sort of a plaza area, if you will. But it has a little bit more of an open feel than the current Posey Park, which is kind of a little bit more enclosed. And then what you see on this side is what we call a water feature, which is essentially, it's a cascading waterfall that starts at the platform level with a, with a pool and a fountain. And then the water sort of follows steps down against this architectural ramp. And then against the front side is again another pool, and there's some seats against that pool on the Posey Park side. Now, this is a shot from the opposite side of San Mateo. Just kind of scanned in current buildings, as you can see, but it shows you a little bit more of the paving. And then a little bit of the station, again, it's a little bit further out of view, but you can see the wind screens that we've incorporated with our design to sort of, on the one hand, obviously, to sort of meet the peculiarities of, of the climate here, but also to blend in with some of the shelters and some of the sort of more modern design that we're, we're using on the structure. And so this is a shot that we took on First Avenue, and it shows some of the planting that we're going to incorporate, some of these climbing fig, I believe they are plants that sort of climb along the rock features. You can't see very well in this shot the finish, the finish. There should be a, there you go. So the finish is a combination of a, sort of more of a three-dimensional rock finish. And then to sort of break up the verticality of it, we've interspersed that with alternating bands of a clearer finish with a little bit of texturing and color to, to sort of break up that verticality. And then also fits in with the main station area, if you will, where we've used actual concrete sort of column elements to sort of give it a little bit more of a, a depth to the structure. So these are some views of the, of the pla, well, here's the station. And, sorry. So here we're at the, at the platform level, again, on the two-track. The building you're seeing on the opposite side is Melody Toyota. So you're actually a little bit lower than the roof level of the showroom in Melody Toyota, essentially, from this shot. Here's another view of the same, or you can see the elevator is the glass tower on the far side. There'll be two elevators provided, and some of the railing attributes. That one's just a night for some reason. And then just, I just wanted to focus on some of the key features that we worked with city staff on developing. We were, worked with your staff quite a bit on, on developing some of these features to sort of work in with, on the one hand, San Bruno, but also some of the, we understand some of the revitalization efforts that the city is incorporating. We wanted to sort of work with that concept. So as I mentioned, we have two station elevators that are in essentially glass-covered tubes on each side. We've incorporated a lot of the drought-resistant planting. We actually worked very closely with the city to sort of say, well, what, what are the plants that have worked well in the city? Rather than try to reinvent the wheel, we used a lot of the drought-resistant plants, but also by using different scales of planting, we've, we've attempted to break up some of the height, if you will, by using lower grasses, going into some shrubs, going into some trees, that kind of thing. It also has the very unintended benefit of, of being very good for graffiti abatement, as you know, for along the wall. The water feature, which I mentioned, there's actually two water features. One on the park side, and then there's a smaller water feature located on a pedestrian bridge that connects to the elevator in the transit park itself. So you'll actually see one on the east as well on the west side. And then I just picked two, but some of the decorative furniture that the city had requested that sort of fits in a little bit more with their vision for some of the downtown. And then as, as well, we mentioned briefly, some of the color texture and paving at Posey Park, that was something that was looked at, was both the texture and the coloration such that it sort of provided the look we were going for. And then I mentioned the variable surface finishes for the structure itself, such that it doesn't appear to be a sheer finish, but yet there's some breakup of the verticality of, of those bands. And then unfortunately, I didn't bring an image of the enhanced lighting features, but one of the things that we worked very closely with the city on was because we have attempted to the extent possible, for a variety of reasons, but one of which is aesthetic, to minimize the total height of the grade separation. We understand the city didn't want a higher-than-needed structure. So we have taken great lengths to, to minimize the actual structural section of the steel that spans across the three crossings. Now, that being said, the city had concern that maybe the look of that would be a little industrial and that it wasn't something that the city was interested in. So we worked very closely to develop a, a series of perforated screening, if you will, that has some recessed lighting. And I think the effect, the city can certainly, the staff can certainly show you what it, what it comes out like, but I think the effect will, will be very, very pleasing when it's done. But essentially, what you'll see is some perforated screening that sort of contours the shape of the underpass with some lighting that's going to kind of penetrate out, and then some additional lighting just for the pedestrian crossing itself. And next step, as I said, we began construction of the box culvert. Right now, the contract calls for completion of the box culvert by the beginning of October. There is an incentive clause that essentially compensates the contractor for being done up to a month early. And on the current schedule, the contractor intends, obviously, to get the bonus, like any good contractor. And in fact, they're actually showing a slightly earlier completion than that. And then the main contract, as I said, will begin actual construction in October. And the main construction component is a two-year construction. So I'm throwing this up here. This is the, this is actually not my contact information, but this is our public outreach. And we have a phone for, specifically for this project number. And also, we have a website, which is directly for the public for any comments or, or concerns that might arise out of the project. And with that, I'll, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you. It was a nice presentation there, short and sweet.
Through the chair.
Commissioner.
Does cellular concrete that's above grade offset the, the lightness of the below grade so it won't float?
Well, essentially, it's not going to float because the weight is the weight of the, of the soil that was there, if you will.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Is that the, the number that you have up there and all that, would that, is that possible? Does that go on the city's website at, at all? I mean.
Yes, it is all on the city's website.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any, any other questions about this?
Nope.
Alrighty then. Is anybody from the pub, public wishing to ask any questions of this? Nope, okay. Then our discussion is over in that regard. So thank you very much. Moving on, city staff discussion. I guess we need to, well, what, select June 10th ARC review?
June 10th in Crystal Springs Apartments. They're doing a small expansion of a few units, so that will be on the agenda. So that's one, one larger item that will be on that agenda. So with that, are there any volunteers? Commissioner Biassadi, Commissioner Chase, Commissioner Marshall. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Commission, any discussion? Nope, okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, and the meeting is adjourned.